I'm the United States of America and to the Republic which contains one nation, on the ground, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, welcome to the work session agenda. I would like to ask the Secretary of Treasury to call the room.
Scott Haworth, President.
I'm here.
William Powell, Secretary of Treasury.
I'm here.
Edward J. Warner.
Here.
William Parrish.
Present.
And Ann Walker will be coming in very shortly.
Will be in shortly. Well, I just want to welcome everybody here for the work session, first work session before Thanksgiving.
Yep.
I want to say a thank you to Charles Surtin from CTV right now who works so hard for this board and for the public getting good information out. Thank you, Charles. We appreciate all you do, buddy.
Yeah, thank you for your hard work, Charles. We all do appreciate it.
We do.
You never miss any of our meetings.
He's the best. He's the best. Alright, so let's get right into, let's get right into this. I have a couple of things on. First one I have on is the Swiss Air Resort 81 West Tiana Road Hampton Bays. First Coastal, I don't see anybody here representing that. You're representing that, right?
You always skip it?
No, it's okay. It's to dredge and maintain approximately 11,350 square feet of the bulkhead to two to five at mean high water to allow navigation through the canal waters. Approximately 600 cubic yards of material to be dredged, dredge material to be placed on the upland area of the property contained with pinned high bales and silt fence to a max of three foot depth. Do you have any pictures? I mean, if you look at this, it's a pretty straightforward project if you want to look though. I think it's... I don't have a problem with them dredging their basin out. I don't know.
Keep the water progress.
It's right next to the old Colonial Shores. Used to be Colonial Shores and the Swiss Air Motel, and it's been dredged, I believe, since the 60s.
Right.
So it's...
I think it can advance. I think it's...
No, there's no submerged aquatic vegetation in the area. It previously dredged, it's not adequate shellfish bottoms, and it's, you know, it will increase the circulation in that little cove there, which would be good for the environment. So I think it's a good project.
It's a good project to advance. You concur? Okay, so we can advance that. It's pretty straightforward. The next one that I have is Jeanne Anne Malone at 25 Tarkin Road in East Quad. I was there this morning. This is a Schittickock Shores property. Let me read you the description. Seventy-five feet of bulkhead, 30 foot southern return, 105 foot capping. They're going to remove the step-down box. They're going to put a 10-foot buffer behind the bulkhead with sand and all timber to be non-treated tropical wood. There's going to be no crease in the elevation of the bulkhead. Again, Schittickock Shores and these canals, these homeowners have to maintain these properties, otherwise it creates issues. This is a good project. People are eliminating these step-down boxes. That's going to be good. There's going to be no increase in elevation. The property to the south of it is not bulkheaded, and the only way that these landowners can protect their property is to put an adequate return. I was there this morning. I think that the return is adequate. The fact that they're using all compliant material, they're not taking any increases in elevation, I think it's a prudent measure for these homeowners to do to protect their property. So I don't have a problem.
Yeah, replacement of these bulkheads are very important because the, each one of the canals are, you know, individually owned by the homeowners association in the area, and they've, you know, taken the course of hiring contractor at a very cost, a very large cost, and dredged those canals out. So it would be maintaining a dredged canal that has been, you know, maintained since the 50s. So, and, you know, not allowing more silt and material to go in there is also a good way to maintain the water depth in there.
Yeah, my advice is to advance this project as well. It's a good project.
I agree.
You...
I'm fine.
Mr. Parrish, Mr. Parrish?
Sure.
Okay, so that concludes the advancement of my applications. Trustee Powell, you have 309 Noack Road?
Yes. Enter Science, would you like to come up?
Hi, how are you?
Good morning.
You can come here if you want.
Up here?
Well, wherever you're comfortable.
Wherever you're comfortable.
Just grab that sign-in sheet if you don't mind.
Just got to grab that sign-in sheet.
Sure. So I'm Sabrina.
Hello, Sabrina.
I had a written call from Enter Science. Two weeks ago Carl had an office around the application and I was having some technical difficulties, so I apologize. But I did listen to the hearing and I spoke with Carl, and we did make those requested changes. We got rid of those tie-off poles and then we removed the skip that was shown on there.
Okay.
So I think we've addressed all of your questions, but if you have more, I'm happy to discuss.
And you made the handrails thinner?
No, they're the same as what they were.
I think two-by-fours instead of the two-by-four or by-six.
Sorry?
On...
Instead of two-by-fours, you want...
On, you were going to post to minimize the size of this, the middle rail here.
Okay, what would you like it to say?
Um, what did we say?
Dimensions do you have?
Five-by-four.
There are no dimensions on them.
Five-quarter by four.
Sorry?
Five-quarter by four.
Okay. Alrighty, we can add that on there.
So it's not so heavy looking.
Okay.
And that's good.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, alrighty.
So can you advance with those?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Clarifications.
Okay, can do.
And just put a new cove sheet in for that, the size of the wood.
And revised plans with the changes, right?
Yes.
Can do.
Just when do we need it?
Um...
It's the afternoon?
We would need it by, like, Wednesday.
By Wednesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Trustee Warner?
Um, 86 Foster Avenue LLC, 86 Foster Avenue, Hampton Bays. Nelson Pope Voorhees, they've asked him to adjourn that until our next meeting.
Okay, adjourn to the next.
Okay, and then Jeffrey Dorf, 15 Carmo Road Hampton Bays, DKR Shores Inc. That was also asked to be adjourned until our next meeting, so we'll push it off to then. Okay?
You got Trustee Rocker. Perfect timing.
Thank you. 361 Dune Road Bridge Hampton. Come on up. Jonathan, Conic Environmental Associates.
Hello.
This is 361 Dune Road Bridge Hampton, just east of the Me Cox Cut. Request for installation of snow fencing. So Jonathan, maybe if you want to explain.
Sure, yeah. So we're proposing three rows to seaward of the existing fencing, one back higher up in the dune. 968 linear feet total, the three rows. The dune is doing great there. The pictures we submitted, the fence we submitted last, got approved the last time and installed is basically buried. So the client just, he wants to, you know, keep building it up, catch more sand, and keep building up the dune and protect his property.
So I have two questions.
Sure.
One, the R rules state that the snow fence should be 10 feet or less from the existing toe of the dune. So I wanted to make sure that on your installation, that that's in place.
Okay.
And because what I'm seeing, when I'm looking at your sketches, is that it exceeds the 10 feet, and so that's one point.
Okay.
The second point, and as you guys are looking at the photos that are here, James, I don't know if it shows as much on the photos that are on the site, but there's been what appears to be some clearing of the beach grass that would be sort of on either side of the entrance. So the walkway from the beach up would be a natural path, but it appears that there's quite an expanse there, approximately, I believe I pasted off, I think it was like 50 feet by about 30 feet where the beach grass...
At the seaward end of the walkway there?
Yep.
Okay.
So we would request that beach grass be, that beach grass be re-vegetated.
Okay, yeah.
There, and also to look at where you are as far as the toe of the dune when you're installing.
Just want to do more work.
Okay, so we'll look at that number and we'll look at the beach grass. The beach grass would be no problem, obviously. And I will look at the dimension from the toe of the dune. I know that where we got approved last time is, you see the existing snow fence, the most seaward one. I mean, this fence is right in front of it, so.
Okay, so just scaling it, it appeared that it was further.
Okay.
More seaward.
Okay.
So...
Are you putting any of this, um, snow fence on top of the snow fence?
Um, it's not on top of the existing.
The first row, because if you do that, that'll bolt it up higher.
Okay.
Billy, it's not encroaching on the, anywhere the beach driving is, is it?
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
No, no.
It's not, it's not marked here.
Yeah.
Oh, there, that's a good picture. So there's probably about 30 feet of dune grass that's seaward of this snow fence. But what I'm concerned about is the toe of the dune, so it's nowhere near beach driving at all.
Yeah, because if they put a row like right, the first row like right where the white thing is, that'll bolt up, that'll bolt that up.
Increase the elevation of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And put the row in between the two rows?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would increase the elevation.
Then you can put your, then you can put your other ones not too far from that. That might be better than going out further.
Okay.
But that's up to you.
Okay. No, no, that's fine.
We'll take a look at that.
That'd be great, because there's almost a double dune there because of the...
That's what, that's what you would make.
Situation closer, the more landward.
The higher it is, the more sand it'll catch.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Okay.
And as that rises, the beach grass will just go through it.
Yep, okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Reiner Schoenbach, 531 Sagaponik Road, Village of Sagaponik, N Consultants. This is a request for a modification. Hi, Susanna, how are you?
Hi, we have to move it fast this morning.
Yes, we're efficient here.
See that?
This is a request for a modification to an existing permit. Suzanne, you want to explain this?
Yeah, so when the dock was approved a few years ago, I don't think they took into account, we didn't do the initial permits, they didn't take into account a tree. There's not many tr, I mean, I think it's just all the aerial. There's not a whole lot of vegetation. This is former farmland. There's one tree, and that's right where the dock was proposed. So we're really just moving it over and adjusting the dimensions slightly. There's also the wetlands in this one spot.
I just passed out some of the photos you included.
Okay, the wetlands in this one spot where we've located are a little narrower, so there'll be less disturbance of actual wetland vegetation. So I think it really makes sense. Now that they're about to build it, they looked at it a little more closely.
So this is the property we're talking about, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, it's a big field, basically, right now.
Right, right.
And there is a residence to the...
To the, that's sort of, yeah, the south and the west, yeah.
And there are permits that were in the process of renewing for a residence on this property as well.
So there's no dock there now, or there is a dock there?
There's no dock.
There's no dock. It's vacant.
My only question is, it's, I mean, if you do the projected property line, it's extended right over the property line. The whole, and the next door neighbor's basically going to look at the, I mean, I don't know if you can see the water, but this house here, it would be right here, and then there's the dock right in front of it. If I'm looking at the right property, which I think I am, it's this one here.
So, Susanna, to Ed's point, what I'm looking at now is your Site Plan C1?
Yeah, it's the same as what I'm looking at here, and it's right, the extended property line goes, the dock is outside of it.
So, so when you draw, this is the property to the, that has the big new house on it, if you draw this line straight out, that's going to intersect there?
Yeah.
So if you could draw this back just a little?
And this guy's going to, this guy, if he builds a house, probably won't see it, but his neighbor, and that's where we get into issues.
Does it, does it matter that it's the same owner?
This is the same owner? The new house is the same owner?
Well, it could be spin-off.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've done like, something like that up in Red Creek, and what's happened is...
Unless you do a joint dock.
I, I mean, you have the adequate water to move it to the north and facilitate a dock there. I mean, the water depth is pretty much the same all along here. So if you move it 20 feet to the north, it would...
Eliminate the issue.
Eliminate the issue.
If it's the same owner...
Yeah.
But if it's sold...
Yes, exactly.
Then there's a new owner, which happened in Red Creek Pond, then there's, then there could be a potential issue.
Then there could be a future problem. Yeah, I mean, we can move it so that it...
And where is the tree in reference to this? You can...
A lot farther.
Yeah, move it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I think that would be the most appropriate. I mean, I don't want to...
Yeah, no, I didn't even notice that. It's such a big property.
You're right.
You don't think about, I mean, normally, and I didn't do the drawings.
And it's all meadow and, and it's...
The water depth is the same along there, so you could...
Yeah, I don't think you would see it, but, no, we can, we can make that change.
Let's go back to the drawing board on this one.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that.
If you just draw it back a bit, because as Ed's saying, it's not going to impede anything there, but the property line is an issue, and I didn't catch that. Thanks, Ed.
Okay, I totally agree.
Let's put a hole on that one.
Okay, Susanna?
Yeah, normally when I do the drawings, I draw that line, and this time the...
This will work sessions are for...
Well, it's been a contentious issue in the last couple hearings we've had, so that's all I'll say. Right, Scott?
Let's go back to the drawing board on that one.
Yeah, we'll want to avoid any future problems. I don't think he'll ever sell it.
Probably, yeah.
You don't know.
Because I was going to ask about a covenant or something like that, but I think it's simpler just to draw it back.
We have plenty of room.
Yeah, yeah, and that tree is, I mean, I'm just looking here, I would say that tree is pretty much up here on the property, like, it's pretty far away.
Yeah.
It's more on that curve in the, in the...
Oh, you've got plenty of room there.
Yeah, so I think...
There's no reason to complicate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm here for the next one.
The next one.
38 Desk LLC.
So this is a bulkhead replacement, and the issue that came up at the last work session was the height. We're proposing to raise the height of the bulkhead by 18 inches. It's considerably lower. It's a foot lower than the bulkhead to the...
South and west.
West, west. And the owner, the bulkhead on the adjacent property to the east is the same height as our existing bulkhead on this subject property. But that bulkhead needs to be replaced soon as well. It's too low as well. That both of this, the subject property and the one to the east are being overtopped fairly regularly, and there's flooding in the road as a result. We went out, we had the surveyor add additional topography to demonstrate the, the height of the bulkhead to the west, which is a foot higher, and the bulkhead beyond that is another seven or eight inches higher than this one.
Do we know if that bulkhead is permitted, the one, so not the adjacent one to the west, but the one that's to the northwest that wraps around?
Yeah.
Do we know if that, if the permit...
I did not check their permits.
James, did we check that? Because I know we discussed it, but I don't remember if we checked it, so, um, that would be one thing that we have to check, is to make sure that that is in fact permitted.
It looks relatively new.
I agree.
It's a vinyl bulkhead.
Good.
So it's that one, James?
So the one that wraps around.
Yeah, but you can tell that this bulkhead was put in, well, Me Cox, as of now, has not been able to drain properly, so the water level in the bay has been perpetually higher for the last three years. And you can see remnants of this on the property where it's at a high bay, it's completely flooded for, you know, long periods of time. You know, it's, raising the bulkhead would probably be the best thing to do here, to slow some of the runoff down, but at the same time, I see it's just grass there, so you can plant a nice buffer behind there to allow, you know, absorption of the water that's on the land from a heavy runoff, rain.
So that was the first thing I handed to you? There's an extensive native species, non-invasive planting.
So this would be a good project, because, I mean...
Like a thousand pieces?
Yeah, but it looks like the bulkhead was placed there, I mean, it's at least the early 80s, if not before, and it looks like it's in dire need of change, being replaced because it's got like wobbles in it.
Oh, yeah, it needs to be replaced. If you look at my pictures, I have one where you can actually see where it's flooding up to regularly in Washington.
You can see it right here. It's, it, there's a rack line, so, I mean, raising it up and putting plantings to absorb runoff would be a good, would make it a good project, and it would be comfortable height to the one that's across there, but it would also, you know, you said 18 inches, so you're realistically only going to raise it up a foot because you need six inches, you know, to have the soil.
I mean, the grade would only come up.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and it would, and it's still pitched down somewhat, so you'd be slightly reducing the runoff and also capturing, you know, nutrients with the grasses and the planting schematics.
So my concern was about the 18-inch rise, and when we're using the property that's to the north and the west that wraps around the head of the creek there, I was curious about whether that, but when, and whether that bulkhead had been permitted. What did you find, James?
I don't see one after 2016, so we'd have to do a more extensive search.
And it looks newer than that?
Before 2016?
No, I mean, that's not that long ago.
I don't think so, because it's vinyl.
If you replaced it in 2016, it wouldn't need to be replaced for another 30 years, ever.
And what does it show as an elevation on the, did it show that it was a rise on the 2000?
No, I'm saying there was nothing.
Oh, there's nothing?
There was nothing since 2016. There might be something before 2016.
Oh, okay.
But I'd have to do more extensive research for it.
Oh, because it's vinyl.
That's why I was asking. I was like...
What's that?
You're saying it was looking kind of new. He doesn't see anything in the west.
Right, and that is what, four, seven years?
Well, newest in the last...
Six years?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not from the 80s, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, no, for sure.
Arab Turchi in First Coastal. We didn't do that one, we did the one right next to it, but that one definitely has a permit, because I remember looking it up, but it's available. I'm sure you can find it.
I will, we'll find that.
The one, he's right, the one next to it, 24 Holly.
24 Holly, so the one that's two, that's around the pond, further, not at the head of the pond.
Right, that's correct.
Okay.
I remember 24 Holly.
Yeah, so do I.
Bruce's area when he was here.
You see if there's any photos of that one?
Photos of, I passed down Susanna's, go ahead, Susanna. So, that's the difference? That's the one that we're referring to?
This is 24 Holly.
So that's beyond, that's around the bend from the one where...
That was permitted about six years ago?
You can see how high the water comes up on that one.
Yep, you see the line? Everything can.
I appreciate the fact that there's, there will be an extensive buffer. I'm still concerned about the 18-inch rise, though. You're saying the property to the east will be...
The property to the east needs to be replaced soon, and according to my client at 38, he's been talking to his neighbor and thinks that they're coming in soon and will want to also raise the height of their bulkhead.
Right. And then there's no bulkhead on the property to, to the east of that, that has a dock. There's no bulkhead there.
Correct.
There's rocks, so.
Yes, rocks, I see a return.
So there's, it's not a traditional wood or vinyl bulkhead, but there is protection on it, and the next property has...
Yeah, I'm just concerned when we start bumping all these up, when there's a property that doesn't have a bulkhead, where does that water go? And it'll run and erode that property without the bulkhead that has the revetment.
Well, how much wave fetch can you get in an area like that? I mean, it's very...
Not, it's not.
On a northeast, you get some.
Yeah, but it's so minimal.
It's minimal.
Yeah.
Because it's very protected.
So I don't think that's an issue.
No.
The road is so close.
Right.
It's so one-lane road. I don't know if you've ever had to drive down there with all the construction happening, the property to the east and a couple lots to the west. It's hard to get out of the driveway. You have to wait for somebody to get all the way down the street.
I mean, you can see even from this picture, that you can see two properties on this picture that are, that are under construction, and there are a couple more that are further down as well.
Is that a town road?
I think it's private.
Private road, town mile.
Yeah, there's a little P right there. It's very narrow. Only one car can get down at a time, and it floods. That's our major concern here.
You're lessening the pitch of the property by raising the bulkhead, which would cause less runoff, and you're also putting a buffer to catch whatever runoff, so I think it's a good project.
Yeah, because there's no drainage there. That'd be a good idea to raise it. Definitely slopes, you can definitely see the slope.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's definitely a slope down.
But by raising the bulkhead and putting the buffer right next to the water edge, you know, it's, it's a natural drainage and it will allow the water to percolate through the ground instead of running directly back into the bay, which is, you can see what it's doing now, because the ground is literally as high as the bulkhead in its pitch, so there's no, there's nothing to intercept it.
Yeah, they've lost a lot of backfill.
So just, Susanna, just go around the corner there and just repeat the heights of where everything is now.
Okay, so...
So starting 24 Holly is for, sorry, James.
Sorry. Oh, you want me to go to this?
Yeah, that, okay.
Do you have a height for 24 Holly?
I think I had your survey, right, that you've submitted the heights, or no?
No, that, we're talking about the one around the corner.
Oh, but you're right, James. The survey has the heights of the bulkhead, right, Susanna? You did that on there?
Yes.
So that works, too.
Yep. Well, it's got the ones just adjacent.
Yeah, you don't have the whole entire...
Oh, you want Holly.
The pond, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll see what Arab has on there or not.
I believe 24 Holly was raised up and there was quite a considerable amount of backfill brought in.
It's like four, 4.1 maybe? 3.5?
That's probably before.
Yeah, that might be before.
Yeah, I think that's before. Do you have the, click on the drawing.
Yeah.
There you go. Now we have sounding. No, we don't really have elevation.
Okay, so the property then to beside it, that the bulkhead was done, that it...
That's the one we don't have. We don't have that.
Excuse me, thank you.
There's no reason for a permit for that one.
Okay, but, so, and you didn't have the height on that one, so you have the one at the head of the pond.
I, I measured it, it's not on our survey, but I measured it as being 17 inches higher than...
The subject?
Than the subject property.
Okay, and then the one that's beside that?
The one adjacent to the west of the subject property is 12 inches higher than this one.
Okay, and that was replaced when?
I don't know. I don't know.
James, do we know that? Can we go twelve inches then to meet, what's that?
We're in the zone here, no?
What's that?
With the elevation changes.
No, there's no permit.
There's no recent permit.
Well, before two thousand sixteen.
Right, so that one was done. And that one looks like it needs to be replaced as well. It is older, yeah, it's a wood, not very great shape, yeah.
You can see the elevation change there.
Yeah, you can see.
So elevating it would be, I think would be.
A good idea.
They're going to need to come, the people on either side of this property need to come in and raise their bulkheads as well.
You'd be reducing the sloping and reducing the amount of runoff coming off that road. So, I mean, I think raising it, you're only going to raise it a foot elevation of land, but the bulkhead will be raised up because you're going to leave that four to six inches lip around there
Right.
to reduce the runoff.
You have the roadway, yeah, a lot of runoff.
And you have nothing there except for grass and bulkhead and water now. So raising it up, you're going to put a planting which will allow the water to percolate through and be absorbed by the planting, and also slowing the runoff when you get a very heavy rain. I, I think it's a good project in this area.
Site-specific, I think it makes sense over here. I know what Anne's worrying about.
And I could see the erosion.
I don't worry about.
But the, I could see, you could see the erosion behind the bulkhead where the water actually laps up there. So raising it, you know, less might still, you might still incur the same erosion and overtopping.
All right, I talked to the homeowner about it and about doing twelve inches instead. And he was like, we really, I'm, I'm out there throughout the year and I see how far up the water's coming and I'm not comfortable with twelve inches.
But to Ed's point, the permit that we finally have obtained will hopefully manage that better.
Okay, so we'll, we'll find that. The problem is, ten years ago, you didn't ask for quite as much detail with respect to the elevation that was proposed on the plans. So you may have talked about it and the information may have been discussed at the time, but it's not always on the plans. But we'll, we'll see what we can find, we'll, we'll foil that.
We have applications here on back of napkins.
Oh, I know, I have seen them.
Hand drawn, so.
Or just a description.
But also you got to, you're dealing with sea level rise and all of that good stuff. And mecocks is a problem in itself because we haven't had it, the ability to drain it.
I know.
We, I mean, we've six years getting a permit to, on emergency authorizations. And that, this is lo and behold what happens when you deal with emergency authorizations on, on the environment.
So where are we at with this one?
I will go along with Ed with this because of the planting plan and because of the fact that on either side, both of those bulkheads will need at some point to come in. I will, though, for the record, just as we are changing the dynamics with this road being very close to the bulkhead and the property two to the east not having a bulkhead, I just want us to be aware of that as we move forward, that there's not going to be any erosion or additional runoff coming off the road onto that property as a result of this raising.
Well, that would be a discussion about what the pitch of that roadway is, you know, before it even hits this point where this buffering is going to be in the bulkhead. So is it, you know.
It's a private road, so you can't even get the highway.
There's nothing you can do about it anyway?
Right, so I, but this will, I mean, you can clearly see what's going on there is, is not good for the waterway, so.
It looks like it's about a foot of water elevation on top of bulkhead at a high bay, which is basically taking, taking in the whole raise.
Whenever time it rains, road stuff washes right down.
You don't have a perfect situation, no matter what you do, but I think site-specific to where we're at in this point in time, I think it's most appropriate and sensible to, to do now.
The eighteen inches.
Yes.
That's my view.
Yeah, and, and the planting.
Yeah.
Yes, the plan that you have.
Yeah.
Perfect, no, but we, we didn't start the fire, right? Just dealing with it.
And I think when the people to the east and the west come in as well, they'll raise up the same height and then you'll have.
Consistency.
Consistency.
Yeah.
Because this will be consistent with the bulkhead at the end.
Yep.
We good?
Which, looking at the bulkhead on the other side, it's elevated eighteen inches over this and it still hasn't flourishing wetlands behind it, so. We really haven't changed the dynamics of the area that much.
Are you folks good? Are you good?
Trusty Parish?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Susanna.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that's good.
Thanks, Dan.
Trusty Parish has two with First Coastal.
And you have one that you skipped over too. The first one, the first one you skipped over?
No, I didn't skip.
Oh, we did that, we went ahead, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, we did that, yeah, we did Swiss Arizona already.
Okay.
So that already advanced.
Okay, great.
So you just have to deal with five forty-one and seven eighty-seven.
Could I just ask a question about Swiss Air because I wasn't here? What extent of, what linear footage is that bulkhead? I'm assuming it's a bulkhead.
No, it's dredging.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's a dredging basin, it's dredging.
Okay.
Yeah.
And where's it going?
On our land, yeah.
Behind the bulkhead?
Yeah, it's a marina boat basin area and it's all filled in, it's got to be dredged out. It's been historically done, so.
Okay.
It's necessary.
Thank you.
There's three properties on that it was, were dredged, at least from the sixties that I can remember.
We'll start off with five forty-one Main Street. This was the last meeting. And we went and took a look at it, Trusty Welker, myself and James Durye. And the question was the raising the bulkhead by eighteen, the proposed bulkhead by eighteen inches.
Okay, who's up?
We went to the north of the property first and the north, the adjacent property to the north was already up, was it eighteen inches there?
Yeah, eighteen and a half, yep.
Eighteen and a half inches, so the project would just be meeting the adjacent property. And then the property to the south, there was a bulkhead. And that was what, Aram?
Well, there was a, there's a separation, there's a natural shoreline about twenty-five plus or minus feet between the, the end of the bulkhead on five forty-one and the property to the south. But that's a, a new vinyl bulkhead that is at least a foot and a half above ours.
There was, there was an area that was open though, there was a gap between the two.
Right, but it's pretty well vegetated.
Is that an easement to the water?
Yeah, it's actually.
Is it a right-of-way?
It's a right-of-way on, on, it, that is part of this parcel, but there's a right-of-way over that for access.
Is it a right-of-way for the community or for individual property?
Individual property, okay.
Bulkhead ends right here.
Right, there's the gap.
This is the gap which is pretty naturally vegetated.
Right, and that's the right-of-way that goes back along the property line to one residence, Aram?
Yeah, to one residence.
That abuts the subject property.
The right-of-way actually goes from the dock, it does a dog leg to meet the, to meet the more, yeah, like that, just like that.
So that the neighbors to the property behind have access to the shoreline?
And, and to the dock.
And to the dock?
Yeah.
What property has ownership of the dock?
This property, five forty-one.
Okay.
But the adjacent property has used it as well.
That's right.
Interesting.
The dark dock.
Yeah.
Now, is there any concern of this right-of-way, this opening, being further eroded?
Well, I don't think so. When we were there, if you look on the southern bulkhead, it's densely vegetated right around the bulkhead itself. And, you know, if there's going to be any scouring, you would see it right there, especially because that's got a northeast exposure. That's pretty densely vegetated right there and I don't think raising it up would change anything significantly. It's got a, more of a southeast exposure there. And you can see there's a sandy beach in front of it, which also helps to buffer it.
And the property to the east of it, which is high already, adjoining, that has a permit to it?
Yeah.
Not, on the other side, the west side would be.
Not to the north.
North.
North, yeah. Yeah, that's a new vinyl bulkhead.
They'd just be raising it up to that.
Seems like it's okay.
I can remember that, doing that because they split the, and we did that permit a couple of years ago.
Remember.
It was the basin boat.
Right now, I think they have.
You had six by, six, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Six by six and then on the inside there was a two by eight, was it?
Yeah.
So I was just wondering whether, given that, if you go back down to the southern section, whether there's a stable natural shoreline and there's access for an adjoining property here that if it would not be a good idea to step that bulkhead down, starting at the eighteen inches on the north and then coming down so that it was closer to grade when it gets down close to the dock and close to this natural shoreline.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly something that could happen. I, I just don't see the benefit right now. I mean, you have, there, that's a sand deposit there to the north of the dock is, is, you know, buffering that shoreline. And if, and if we, if you remember when we were there, there's only about four or five inches of freeboard above high tide on the entire bulkhead. So if we were to lower it there, then that would decrease the protection in that area.
Don't overtop it, maybe create a problem on that corner, which may be probably.
But I think that area's going to stay pretty stable because it's got that sandy beach and the vegetation. I don't think raising the bulkhead there is going to destabilize that in any way.
And the bulkhead's stepped back off the.
Yeah, you can see the jog in it up there.
So it actually gives a little area, an angle for the waves to be absorbed in that little area. And the area that, south of the, east of the dock or south of the dock is, it looks like it's all vegetated and it's stable there.
Yeah.
It is, it's stable at this point, but that's what I'm concerned about, that it stays stable going forward. Aram, are you finding any modeling, any water modeling software that you have found to be useful for situations like this that we're encountering time after time after time where there's a projected increase, a substantial increase in bulkheads? And we're looking to see what are the effects down the road with not only storms, but in some situations with just our, our spring tides and sometimes not even them, sometimes just our, our daily tides. Are you finding, have you found any good modeling?
Short answer is yes. We've done some extensive analysis in Shinnecock Bay of increases in relative sea level rise as a result of Shinnecock Inlet. And that translates also over to Mauritius Bay. What, what's happening in both bays and, and here in Quantuck Bay, which is in between them, gets the confluence of both currents, is that the, as time goes by, the inlet is being scoured deeper. So the cross-sectional area of the inlet is increasing, which means more water can come in on the flood tide and raises the, the, the high tides. And, you know, all of us have seen it, the, the place I looked at is Shinnecock shores where they have sunny day flooding down at the end of their roads. And by looking at the nineteen fifty's Army Corps tide gauges and then comparing that to the current tide gauges maintained by USGS and others, the, the rate of rise inside the bay, inside Shinnecock Bay, and I think the same is true in, in Mauritius and Quantuck, is greater than what you see, for instance, at either Montauk or in the Battery. And this is because they started out at a lower level because it was pretty much an impounded bay before the thirty-eight hurricane. And then the tide range has just been increasing, higher and lower. And that's going to continue to occur in addition to sea level rise itself.
I think she was talking about like computer modeling, where you could show, you know, wave effects on a certain type of structure, given certain variables that are in, but I think that's what you were getting at.
Thank you for that explanation, but what I was after was exactly what Scott's saying, is some sort of computer modeling where we could show that this is where, this is how, this is how much. That's what I was wondering, if you've encountered that anywhere in your travels?
Certainly, certainly that exists. Running those models on an individual case basis is quite expensive, like tens of thousands of dollars.
Or more.
Yeah, well, we first have to buy the modeling software, which is the stuff, the, the one that's used. There's two different softwares. One is from the Army Corps of Engineers and the other one is from the Delft Institute in Holland. And then, then you have to run those softwares on each individual property, which means you have to have detailed hydrographic data and topographic data, and then you have to run the model, and then you have to interpret the model results. So we do that on bigger projects, but on an individual bulkhead basis, it would be prohibitively expensive.
You would think that FEMA, somebody would have engaged that.
In a regional manner, yeah, that hasn't been done?
What, what FEMA does, and, and that's totally available, is FEMA runs storm surge models. So a storm surge model is different than a wave model. A wave model is looking at what, what type of wave is generated, how high is it, what's the frequency? And then from that, you can generate, you know, impacts from structures or beaches or anything. What, what FEMA does is they run a storm surge model, which is really how much the, the surge comes up. That is available.
To the public?
To the public.
On their website?
On their, well, to some degree on their we, on, their website has a, only looks at the hundred-year storm. But for example, when they did the study for Suffolk County, which is available, they looked at ten-year, twenty-five-year, fifty-year and a hundred-year, and five-hundred-year storms. But they're only looking at surge level. So if you're just, that, if that, that data is available and it's available for every piece of shoreline in Southampton.
I think that's worth the board doing a little research on, you know, because that, that type of information will be up for the whole town, not just our board, the Congress, you know, whatever. Planning would be a good discussion, so that, that's a separate from this, but.
Right, but it's a, it's a good start anyway, even though.
It's a good conversation.
A hundred-year storm, the Hurricane of thirty-eight?
Yes.
Was Sandy considered a hundred-year storm?
Sandy here was only about a twenty-five-year storm. This, you know, if you look at, there's this, online, there's a thing called the Sandy Mapper. And it has all of, what, the USGS went out ahead of Sandy and installed a whole bunch of temporary, you know, not tide gauges, but tide, water level.
Elevation, sort of.
Just, yeah, water level. And also they went in and they, they went and they found where there were, you know, seed marks on buildings or fences. And then they surveyed them and. So in this area, it's, it's, believe it or not, it's only about six point two, which is not, you know, the, the, in New York City, it was thirteen.
So six point two feet?
Feet, yeah.
Okay, and that was the storm surge?
And that was the storm surge, yeah.
Okay.
It was very localized flooding, especially points west of here.
With Sandy.
Well, yeah, well, west, as, as close you got to the city, higher a surge. So I think one of the things I mentioned to Trusty Parish and Welker in the field was, you know, that, that FEMA modeling is available and, you know, I, I think it's reasonable, you know, it, it's probably not reasonable to build a bulkhead to a hundred-year protection. Be about, you know.
Well, it outlips the weight of the bulkhead.
Eight feet above sea level or something. But, you know, to a lesser level of protection where you're going to get, you know, frequent storms that occur.
Well, I mean, are bulkheads built for protection of the property or protection of the home?
Excellent.
That, that's, that's where we're going, I mean, because people seem to want to raise these bulkheads and raise the structures up. And they want to protect their homes. They, I mean, all of a sudden now you have homes that are being, being built on cement coffers and in pilings. So where, where is there a balance when the home could be safely protected with, you know, mitigation as far as pilings and. know, mitigation as far as pilings and cement walls and leaving or reducing the amount of height of the bulkheads so that the land can flood and then drain off naturally and not do damage to the home? So there's got to be a, there's a balancing act. I mean, our, our board deals with the bulkheads and the bay and, and that part of it, but then the, the town and the federal have to deal with the other end of it. You know, it's, it's, it's a balancing act.
Yeah, it is, and, and so, you know, that's why I said that, you know, a hundred-year level of protection for a bulkhead is probably not reasonable, but something on the order of twenty-five or fifty years probably is. And I think that's where you have to go look at, have to go look at what those elevations are, because they're different on different sections of shoreline, they're not uniform.
Yeah, and you also have like Quonic Bay versus Shinnecock Merches. The wave fetch and the wind direction on a southeasterly wind will completely decimate, you know, Shinnecock Bay and Shinnecock Hills and the north side of, of Merches. Where Quonic is southeasterly wind, it's very limited on the wave fetch and it's also limited on the amount of damage that could be done. You know, it's each bay and, and during a storm, a wind direction at the time of high tide makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
And we, we can't control that no matter how good our science is.
It's a good, it's a good global discussion and there are a lot of points, but relative to this work session and this application.
Yeah.
I think we need to get back on track.
Scott pulling us out of the weeds.
Well, I find it very interesting.
They're super important weeds.
No, it's a good global conversation, it is, but let's, let's get the task at hand and then we'll, we'll put that on for further due diligence.
Okay, so to my point about stepping it down as it gets closer to the south end.
Trustee Parrish?
I think, I was satisfied with it and I think it should advance as is.
With eighteen inches across?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which would be pretty much like the bulkhead that it would be matching up to?
Yes.
I'd be okay with that.
So trustee Pell, are you?
I'm fine with it.
Fine. Trustee Welker?
I'm going to be starting to look into these modeling.
I know, that's a different conversation. Really, it's very interesting, but let's focus.
And I'll give you, and I'll give you an address of a bulkhead that we did exactly what you said in Shinnecock Bay after the meeting, so you can go look at it.
I think we can advance this.
Okay, yes.
It didn't work out the way I thought it was going to.
Let's advance this.
Thank you for the discussion.
Obviously, you're going to check the stamps on all of them. Let's now go to Patrick A. Burke, seven eighty-seven Montauk Highway.
This is also a property we went and inspected last week. And I received something from Andrew Bird. You're proposing to move the, the dock south by, was it thirty-eight feet now?
In total.
In total? Where you, before you had it at, what was it, fifteen feet?
Fifteen feet, right.
So this is the old one, I think Aaron was going to bring in.
Yeah.
That's the updated plans?
Is this for the board? Can we keep this?
Yeah.
Yep, Jess just has to stamp it in.
And then just pass it back this way?
Can you do an overhead shot of this, please, neighborhood?
It's right at the bridge at, at Huyag where the, it's the second property.
The Montauk Highway Bridge.
Yeah, sorry, Montauk Highway Bridge, and it's the south side.
I remember when we did the neighbors.
Oh, that was a long drawn out process.
Yeah, there was a problem with that, remember that?
This looks, this looks, this looks better.
Yeah.
This looks, this looks.
So the conservation board had noted that there had been excessive clearing of land on this property and their recommendation had been to center this dock more than it was previously sighted on the plans. And this would create less disturbance than the previously sighted dock by moving it off the property line almost fifty feet and centering it on the property. It's not exactly centered, but it's significantly off the property line.
This looks much better.
And it, much less clearing will be required as some.
We still acquire the proper depth of water and if we move it any further south, according to the hydrographic survey here, you're going to be losing the water, so.
That looks good.
This could be, this is sighted pretty much where it should be on the property.
That looks good.
I'm fine with it.
I'll move it, this one, be advanced as well.
Okay.
We just need stamp plans for that.
Advance and advance.
Stamp plans, got it.
If you want to, if you want to just take these, I don't know, we already stamped them in.
That's right, I'll get you, I'll get you the right ones.
And you're going to have to.
And a cover sheet.
The cover sheet.
Okay, great. I think that's all for me.
We all set?
That's all we have.
Great, thanks, Aaron.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. And also thanks to trustees Parrish and Welker and James for making a site visit. It was a cold, clear day, though. That's the goodness.
With little wind.
It wasn't raining.
Little wind, yeah, indeed.
I'll take the rain over the cold. I don't like the cold.
Better than a dark stormy night, so. Aaron, we just need stamp plans for that other one, five forty-one.
Yeah, just make sure everybody that we advanced today has the stamp plans in before they make the agenda. Let's see, we've got some waterfowl hunting location, permit applications for determination. My name?
Hello.
How are you?
Good, how are you guys doing?
Good.
We just have some, some late renewals, right, which happens from time to time?
Yes.
Lot of stuff going on in people's lives.
Exactly.
You get it?
All right. So first up, we have Mr. James V. Warner.
I'm accusing myself of this one.
Okay.
Really?
Line number two fifty-two, he was a late renewal. For a little history, there's no history of any late renewals beforehand or no NOVs ever, so this is his first late renewal.
It happens.
It does happen. And he did write a letter explaining why. It was late, and this is his letter. I apologize for being late in renewing my duck blind permit, it completely subbed my mind. I would appreciate it if I could still renew it. Thank you, James V. Warner.
I'm fine with it.
Okay with it, all right.
Did the Bay Constable respond?
The Bay Constable's recommendation, they said everything looks good pending trustee.
Yeah, it looks to me like they've, they've looked at all of these already, is that right?
Uh, yes.
You've got a couple more for me, you've got Mr. Hutchison.
Mm-hmm, I have two for Mr. Hutchison. First one is, oh, I'm sorry that.
Copies are the same.
Blind numbers are correct, I apologize about that.
Are they two different blind numbers or?
They are two different blind numbers. Like typo on my end, I apologize.
That happens too sometimes.
Yeah. Human, human error. Okay, so the first one we're going to be discussing is number two forty-nine, sorry about the missing numbers. And Mr. Hutchison came into the office to hand in his late renewals. The only history of him ever having another late renewal was in 2014. This is his letter to the board explaining why it's late. To make concern, I am sending these permits late, I'm so sorry. To your friend.
Yeah, let me just see it.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay, let me see, let me see.
It's handwriting. I could explain this backstory more, he did tell me personally what happened.
He had a death.
Yes.
And then he, yeah.
Yeah, one of his friends in the Hamdenese Fire Department fell ill very, very rapidly and, yeah.
I see, I see, he has a personal letter here, so I get it. So I, I'm fine with, I'm fine with both of them.
Okay.
Okay, we can advance both of those.
Both of those?
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't see any.
Just for the record, the other blind number is, blind number two fifty.
Thank you.
Forty-nine and two fifty.
Yeah, two fifty.
I'm fine with that.
All right, now moving on to Mr. Pell, we have Edward P. Aduck for permits number two twelve, two fifteen and two sixteen. The history for all three of these blinds for late renewals, there was one in, for the 2020, 2021 hunting season for all three. He came into the office to hand in his late renewals and he wrote on a piece of paper, he said apologies on the late renewals of duck boat locations, two fifteen, two twelve and two sixteen. I did send it over to Alan Rich and they said everything looks good on their end pending trustee.
Yeah, they're two, the boat, two of my duck boats and one of the blind, right?
To my knowledge, all of them are duck boats.
And, and these are located North Sea?
Um, they're all in West, the West Neck area, North Sea, yeah.
Scala Pond?
They're in Scala Pond.
Yeah, are you good, Bill?
Yes, they're in Scala Pond.
Now, in the past, haven't we gotten a list, each of the trustees' areas to kind of get ahold of some folks just to make sure?
Um, of the people who we haven't received, the renewals.
Right, so maybe you can put that together?
Sure.
And then we'll, we'll, we'll review that and see to tighten it up.
Yes.
Quickly, if, if we can, you know?
Sure.
It's under Bay Constable review right now and then when I will send it to you guys.
Okay, and then, because that's what we did in the past, I think we made some phone calls just to tighten everything up.
Sure, okay, too, okay.
So, question, when, when a late renewal happens and a letter of explanation is submitted, but hunting season starts prior to the meeting?
They can't stall the duck blind until they get.
Permit.
Permit from us.
Right.
Yeah.
So they'd be hunting without the proper permit from the trustees, right?
Or they hunt with their friends.
Right, maybe not using that blind, maybe they're.
In this specific area, you know, it's very, you know, this is a, you only hunt there occasionally, you don't hunt there every single day. So, I mean, there's quite a few other blinds in the area.
And he works for the property owner?
Yeah.
Okay, so just so that people are aware of that, the hunters are aware of that, that they cannot hunt until.
Right.
It's been approved by the board regardless of when hunting season starts?
Yes.
I think each trustee needs that list.
Sure.
Okay.